All right.
All right, I guess we'll get started here. So slight delay due to some lock problems, but we're in and going. So I don't see anyone here in person nor in Zoom land. So there was no privilege of the floor. You'll note there's no approval of the minutes because I never got around to writing the minutes in the last meeting. That will happen hopefully this week that I'm gone. So we'll do that. And then bring us already to the town board report. Michelle, anything you want to tell us?
No, just that there. I don't know if you've spoken to Mark about doing a presentation to the board.
I did briefly. For my time, I think that I got busy now. I think that I will do it. In what did I look? I think. In October, no, the 17th meeting of in September, you have a business meeting.
Yeah.
I'll be back in town. I could probably do that.
Okay. So.
I mean, I got some impression from you. I find that there might be some interest in having to do it in person. Mark seemed a bit surprised by that, but it's okay. I'm happy to come and chat with you guys. It'll be the time. Do it.
Right. I think it would be good.
Yeah.
So we can ask questions.
Yeah, yeah, I think it'd be better than back and forth.
Yeah.
So.
So there's that. They seemed. People seem happy that you're talking about agricultural takes.
Okay.
And. That's all I have to report. We don't really talk, just kind of waiting to see what change you might suggest to the zoning law.
All right. Good. And yeah, I will, I will. Contact Mark tomorrow about that. That meeting. Okay. So at the last meeting. We pretty much finished up. We had some finished up mostly last detail on the the zone, the manufactured homes and flood zones. But I had said I would go check and see what language there was in the existing zoning law regarding flood zones that were officially called flood hazard areas. Now. Because again, we came across, you guys weren't here in the minutes. I don't know. But there is language in New York State Building Code saying if you're going to put a manufactured home in a flood zone, this is what you have to do basically this high. So in other words, there's no prohibition on doing it. And indeed, there is regulation for doing it. And so I just wanted to make sure that we all were aware that that existed and that it applied, but it seemed kind of weird to call out manufactured homes. As Barb pointed out, in a law or some other way that might make it seem like other homes didn't have to do anything special. So any rate. Here's the actual situation. There's not a lot actually in the zoning law and what's there is a little weird. What it says in the stream corridor overlay, there is a clause that says any construction in a flood hazard area has to conform to the town's flood damage prevention law. Which is great. Though stream corridor overlay would apparent section would normally apply only to the stream corridor overlay. And certainly some of that overlay is flood zones, but flood zones are outside of that as well. So it's just, it's a holdover from the time when the overlay was not just a stream corridor overlay, but also all the flood hazard areas plus D E C, other wetlands. So I think it's just an odd place in the zoning law. So I now have a new change to recommend. But there is that statement in there. Now that in itself only refers to the flood damage prevention law. But if you go to that law, which is is written by the state, the town adopts it, it's standard language that every town adopts. There is a whole section on manufactured homes in flood zones, and it's basically exactly what's in the state code. I mean, the state code is adopted from the international code, but anyway, so it's in there. So bottom line is yes. All structures in flood hazard areas have to conform to the law, and it has various strictures on all structures, and there are specific strictures on manufactured homes. So I think basically we're good. It's covered without us saying anything more. We already say stuff in the zoning law and the flood damage. So I think we can. No change. We don't have to add anything.
Fair enough. That's one much change about the zoning law.
Yeah, no, well, I will. What I think we should change in the zoning laws is that there needs to be a place not under the stream corridor overlay.
Okay.
That has that same language because it really is more general than that subsection. It's for all construction in a flood zone. And it says that, but you don't look for it in this one specific section on the on the stream. It's just an odd place, but the language is correct and good. So that's where I think we're done on that. And I will go talk to the town board about it, you know, in about a month. So we will need shift now our full attention to the solar siting law. As we know, specifically agricultural takes was one of the requests from the town agricultural committee that we do something that was a bit more involved that more encouraged it more or did something about it more. That's more is something we have to figure out. So this is our first real discussion about it, and I know it can probably be kind of meandering and frustrating and everything is like, are we getting anywhere? I did draft a few sort of like focus questions that might help keep some conversation going along with the first step I don't want to do is actually ask for other questions to add to this list that I will now tell you about. And then, and then I think we'll just go through the questions one by one, and then after all things will come up as as we chat. And. So basically, based on the discussion we did have last meeting. And you know, I had a few questions in mind that I sent to Guillermo Metz, who is the head one, you know, like the point guy on this at governor's extension of Thomas County. And he wrote something back that I sent to you all. And then based on that, I had, you know, I pulled a pointer from him. So here's my thoughts on some topics we could talk about now. And again, that I want your thoughts and other things like we could add. As Guillermo brought up, the definition of what counts as agricultural takes is a key decision to make. Because that from that flows some of the things you might say in a law or not. So the question is, okay, how could we, should we define agricultural takes in Caroline? Guillermo gave a couple of examples and that we can read through that. But in particular, not only our thoughts on what maybe we want agricultural takes to count as that, but also thoughts on what will be maybe a process beyond us of determining that. Now, is this be something that that we or someone should do outreach to town, the town or the farmers? It's not, you know, should we do some sort of public outreach other question? And or should we kick it to the ag committee? So it's both what do we think about agricultural takes as a definition, but also what we think about for a process of deciding what Caroline wants it to be. So that's I think one possible discussion topic. Guillermo brought up that you have compliance. You can, you know, there's the obviously the review process where everyone agrees you will do X, Y, and Z, and then there's the follow through. Does it actually happen? And so I think a discussion of yeah, what would, how do we envision compliance? What do we think might be going on there? Another question is some initial thoughts on the kinds of things we might say about agricultural takes. In particular, as I mentioned, it's a document that Barb found from Connecticut that has some sort of general language about what they see as requirements for agricultural takes. I think that's a good starting point to consider those and talk about those. And on one hand, it's good, I think, as I pointed out in the email, that they are not so specific of exactly X height and feet, and we can talk about that. But the question is, did it go too far the other way? Is it just too general? That's not that helpful. And I have two more that I thought about. Barb raised a really key question last meeting, which is basically, are developers accepting of this? You know, how much do they need to be convinced or forced or coerced? And so I think the key question is, I think, as Guillermo wrote, sort of, you know, they're willing, but not eager necessarily. And so the question is, what do we see as the carrots and the sticks? You know, to what extent are we going to be sort of, what can we offer to make it more palatable? What do we want to require that whether you, you know, will you find a palette or not? If you want to build in our town, you gotta do X. So where are carrots and sticks? And that sort of leads into the question of sort of requiring versus encouraging. And in particular, how do we handle different types of land in Caroline, like prime farmland soil? The Connecticut document is really clear. You've got to do agricultural takes on prime farm soil. Well, maybe that's the right choice, maybe not. And you'll hear from Scott, Caleb Scott. Yeah, his vision is often that maybe like marginal farm land is best for agricultural takes. So you do grazing there and you get, you know, it's, you know, taking prime land that I'm producing. So that's the question. How would we set this up in the law? What land do we want to push towards or away from? As a basic question. So those are what I see from our discussion last time, feedback from Guillermo. But as you guys read some of the stuff that was sent out, or as you've been thinking about this, I know all of you late at night are thinking about this before you go into bed. Are there any other questions that have occurred to you? That you were wondering about that you'd like us to talk about today or next meeting?
Well, I'd like to know more from the ag committee about what they meant by more. You know, are they like, you know, are they concerned only about prime farmland? Are they concerned about all farmland? Are they concerned about, you know, making sure farmers, you know, get a good economic return? I mean, you know, what is it that they are interested in? You know, and to your point earlier about process. I mean, it seems to me that that I don't, I don't, I don't, I wouldn't advise that the planning board kicks it to them. Because I think the planning board has a stake in this and has a larger view of solar and all. But I think in terms of specific questions to them, they're, they're the right stakeholder group to be asking, you know, you know, how would you define agricultural takes? Not, not that you know, we're going to use your definition, but how would you do that? What are your goal? You know, what are your goals with solar? You know, do you care about all farmland? Do you care about economic return to the farmers? You know, what are the drivers? What are, you know, how, you know, just get more from them about what they mean as, you know, more attention agricultural takes.
So I'm on the egg committee, so I can talk with them our next meeting about it. And ask these questions.
Because what I will say is, I, you know, when we decided to take this up, or you know, I first kind of in Erica, I said, do you guys just want to write a bunch of regulations and have us incorporate them into the law? I basically said, no. And then what kind of rule do you want to place that? Well, Caleb's the guy you talk to. So that's sort of what I got so far. And I doesn't mean the most, more of you don't want to be engaged and involved, but I got a fairly hands off approach from her. It makes me she had none other balls in the air. So I think it's.
I think, you know, a formal formal request, you know, maybe through Brad, you know, and the chair, you know, to to that egg committee with questions from us, you know, the things that we.
I think if we have specific, specific questions, that would probably be helpful on on just that. And I think there are people who have opinions.
Yeah. And I, I mean, I don't, I don't think it's right for us to rely only on a cow. I mean,
No, I.
One guy. That's why there's an egg committee.
In the past. Surveys have worked pretty well on the egg committee, especially because they don't require you to go to a meeting. You know, people can do it, fill in a questionnaire when they get a chance to. It's their time is so unpredictable. Especially if you have animals.
Is there a good response rate?
I thought so. We did a lot of, we did two, two, at least two surveys during the time we developed the egg plan. And yeah, we, we, we got a lot of information, you know. And a lot of the responses ended up informing what went into the plan. Yes. And usually it takes a couple iterations to get those questions more meaningful. So that I don't know how that goes. But Erica's good at questionnaires. I don't know. Maybe you are too good. And you would be the feedback person though.
Yeah, I mean, I can give you feedback, but I mean, are you talking about creating a survey online or just?
Or just word of a survey, which.
Yeah, because technical savvy and computer tile.
Yeah, but we, we do have, right, we do have the friends of Caroline and the Caroline.
Right.
Ag committee and it looks like quite a few people are reading those.
Sure.
Yeah. And we don't over send a communication out.
Yeah, I mentioned, I came, I, I want to involve the egg committee. And what I recommend is in terms of a definition of what agricultural takes is that they have a, of the role of reaching out to the farmers and say, what do you guys want? You know, that would be less effective and less efficient for us to try to do duplicate that kind of work. That's what they're there for. But obviously, yeah, we could have a town hall or, you know, a town event, which any public is all invited and said, but I think this is probably one of those specialty issues that is better handled by really approaching the farmers who might be engaged in this at some point.
The other tricky part is that the farming community doesn't conform to the borders of the town. And the activity is often from people outside the town as well. So, you know. It, I think it's good if you're not thinking, just want to hear from people in Caroline because you don't know who's going to be the big player in a good way.
Right, right. So yeah, so I think that kind of, you know, in terms of a definition, and that's one of the questions, a specific question, one of the others, same, you know, it's a very specific question. That is, I think, good to push to the ag committee for for feedback. As a reminder from last meeting, you know, my survey has this very bare bones definition that says if you're combining full takes and agriculture, that's agricultural takes. And the American Farm Trust Group is a much more farmer centric organization has a definition that to do it, basically, you develop the the system in conjunction with the farmer on the property, deciding what the best mix, et cetera, is. So I'm going to hand this piece of paper to you. That's your definitions. But and there may be others out there too, but that's what came up with that the meeting I was at. But so the question would be, could, would the ag committee in whatever way they seem fit, I think a survey is a great one, help come up with what kinds of thing would they want to call agricultural takes in the town? Another key thing, for example, some places include if you do, if you plant essentially a field mix, so you're encouraging pollinators, that that counts as agricultural takes. Do we want that Caroline? Do we not? I mean, those sort of key questions, I think. That's why it asks us, how farmer centric? Does it have to really be farming or is pollinator garden good enough? And any other things basically that the community can think of to to help craft a definition that's appropriate for Caroline would be great because that would essentially mean that we wouldn't be duplicating, you know, and trying to reach out to the community. They're already plugged in with.
Would, do any of us have contacts in the solar community? It might be good to just touch base with one of them.
I mean, the solar companies. I mean, I have contacts with solar companies.
Okay.
I mean, Mike Lucky, you know. Yeah, he, or he used to, or he's retired now from them, from they now call themselves. What are they called? But they were ETM Solar Works and now they call themselves Black Island, but they did my solar and then my batteries and stuff.
I think most of the the solar we're talking about is usually some pretty big developing companies.
Sure, for for sure. But yeah, he might have some input and connections.
I think it's an excellent suggestion. You know, I don't particularly, but that is the running the back of my mind too, that, you know, understanding what really is sort of acceptable from their end is also important. And as I think I put to Guillermo, what should we do to encourage and what should we not do to discourage?
Yeah.
You know, solar development. And I think unfortunately, you know, given the fact that we're relatively far north in latitude and that various tax credits are rapidly disappearing. It's becoming increasingly economically marginal. I hope I'm going to be wrong, maybe some others in common, but you know, already the project that may be taking place in Caroline was predicated on certain solar tax credits that I don't know if they're still there or not. I don't know if the project is still going or not because of that.
Which, which company ended up with that?
I don't know the company.
Okay, I'll look at her.
Yeah.
I bet you they're reachable. I bet you they're.
Yeah. So yeah, they were actually still working on that product. For example, it'd be great to have someone from them come in and say, once we had some thoughts of what we might be doing or whatever and say, hey, how does this come across to you guys?
Where's that located?
Old seventy six down.
And you know that those developers, they have to take care of the land afterwards. And they either pay someone to mow it or they pay agricultural takes. And I think how it's working right now is, at least as far as I know from Caleb, is that agricultural takes is just bidding cheaper and developers are like, okay, win, win. So that is the way it's sort of going right now.
So so were that is true is essentially in his forte, which is sheep grazing.
Yes.
Because it's compatible with the existing layout, et cetera, of the panel. And that was some of the stuff we sent out and even, you know, other things, but since the sheep don't destroy things and can get under low panels, then panels can still be put at fairly dense spots. And so all you do is you're adding, doing sheep instead of mowing. Absolutely. The field agricultural takes is wider. And then some people say, well, how about trying to combine various crop things with that? So we don't lose our crop production. But yeah, if you're just saying, can we do some other kind of vegetative maintenance than mowing? Absolutely. That that is the mature thing. It's what's already in the solar law. And I think what the call out is just what, what further than that can we can we do? But you're right.
But I still think that's the way the developers are going to look at it. As long as they're either saving money. They're gonna say, yeah.
So Guillermo, in his comments, said something about, you know, the kind of the non-solar challenges. One is the, he said, lack of processing facilities. Is he talking about wool? The meat or what kind of processing?
Typically, that's meat processing from what I've seen and read about it in the industry, that there's a a shortage of certified places for butchering again for meat.
But we do have a really strong fiber wool presence in our town. Amy was, Amy Glazer was at a one of the fiber wool organizations, I think a state organization in. She would be, I'll tell you who else growing, raising sheep for fiber. And, you know, typically you choose one or the other of those some people trying to.
So if you doubled or tripled the amount of wool being harvested, is the capacity to do that?
Well, I know that Caleb's trying to get rid of all of his sheep that has to be sheared.
Because there's no processing.
It's not so many what?
He's, he's getting, he's breeding out shearing sheep and ones that just fluff off their fleece. Because it's a whole lot less work and they're not really, they're not gearing toward.
So he's here for meat production.
Meat and just for.
Yeah. So yeah, to what you said, agree. If a developer is going to have to spend money one way or the other, and that may seem maybe cheaper, or they have some green sense to say, okay, it's about the same cost. I value sheep. It's going to happen.
Yes.
The question to us and to the town is, okay, but we may have a value on maintaining agricultural production in the town. We don't want all the farms just covered over solar panels, you know, they've been grazed with sheep. So do we have to mandate that if you do this project on this kind of land to be defined, you must do agricultural tags? Or half your project has to, the other part, you know, that's the sort of stuff I think we're going to be grappling with. And I think that it, there is a loss in solar production if you space the panels further out. And so if there's a trade off, then at some point the developer is going to say no.
There's also the aspect of solar production that we can only support just so much before you have to start putting in heavier wires or
substations.
Substations. Yeah. So that, that we requires a huge shift in the whole market, electric power market. And that's not happening. It's not going in that direction right now. Yeah.
Not, you're saying because they're putting off the kind of capital expenditures? Or what do you mean by?
We don't have the load. So why build the, why build the infrastructure to for the load?
But so not disagreeing, but so as projects like Yellow Barn and other things come online, there will be a need, as you say, for for those lines, even though there isn't a local load, you want to then supply that electricity to the grid in general. So almost projects will upgrade things like this project on old seventy six is having to upgrade the lines to the mid off substation if they actually go forward. I don't know. And the substation has to be upgraded as well.
Exactly. Have you seen the price tag?
I know.
They haven't disclosed it, have they?
So.
You said, stop putting that public information out there during COVID. I don't know why.
But typically, as Irene reported last time, you know, the developer pays that cost. So that that's part of their calculus when they think about, do I want to do this project?
Yes.
The question that I raised, that Caleb is often asking is, is there municipal role if we want to encourage this kind of development? Is the municipal role in helping foster the infrastructure necessary? I think that would be a big piece to swallow for the town of Caroline to say, okay, we're going to, but it's just, I think it's interesting. Policy question is, if this is a value, is there a public? If there's public good in having agricultural takes, is there then a public need to help provide for the infrastructure?
Right. But you're still going to be limited by what size farm? Like by size, period. And if you don't, if you can't support a large solar, you're just going to have small farms. Where are you going to put, what is the size of the one now on seventy six road? Is it fifteen?
I don't know the power anymore. Again, three or four years ago, I probably did. I don't know.
Yeah, it's around fifteen or twenty and the size.
Yeah, it had to be under twenty five because they were coming to us and not always. And so it was probably close to twenty.
Yeah. So that's very different from Yellow Barn. Because of the huge nice substation. So the, the whole, all the little pieces of the economics from the farming, like you can only have so many sheep around here before you're starting to look like feedlot style, if they can do that for sheep. You know, find, find the land.
Yeah. Well, I mean, I think that the sheep density is basically set by the acreage. They don't think they pack them on more dense than than what it takes to maintain the lawn.
Not at this point.
Yeah, but it does give you more sheep and therefore you have to find a market for those sheep when they're done.
Yeah.
And as you say, if we, I think there's a problem all over the country, certainly in upstate New York is, okay, you have a lot more facility, solar facilities. You got, you need the power lines to transmit the power. You need the storage facilities to keep the power in.
How about just.
You know, so any rate.
Yeah.
I would think that you could just put some generalized language in there just to say that, you know, approval would be pending that all these requirements are met, that that it is capable, that there is these that the infrastructure is either in place or upgradable.
Yeah, but you don't want to be waiting it towards hundred megawatt solar farms. Because twenty, thirty megawatts is big for this area. That, that's my point.
So where that may come into play, and then remember another question is, I take it, you know, aim language might be in the law in terms of how we encourage or discourage that you would then want to put a sort of cap or something or another.
Yeah, or just less emphasis.
Listen, I'm a huge, huge thing.
Is there a list, or maybe that's what you want the egg committee to do, of what things can be farmed underneath solar panels?
Some of the stuff I sent out has examples. There's a lot of, so quick answer, being worked on, basically. It's an active area of research. The, if you have a chance to eventually look at the chapter in the nice, the long and assertive document, there's a whole section on various things. They have sheep in there. Cows, I think, because you know, the dairy industry is quite interested in this because there's a lot of dairy in, in, in New York. It turns out that sheep are better at, at what needs to happen around panels than cows because cows are bigger and heavier and. at what needs to happen around panels than cows, because cows are bigger and heavier and but there's all, it had like pear trees, apple trees, grapes, you know, all kinds of stuff. So there is, but none of that appears to be sort of mature in terms of what's the right mix of panels versus crops, uh, cycling, et cetera, right now compared to, say, sheep, which is why I think that's the thing that's usually mentioned and talked about.
Yeah.
But yes, there is a whole, it is basically that is the list I would look at. It's everything they mentioned in there. I think they did a pretty good literature search when they pulled that document together.
But is that search just as a, like a brainstorm of ideas? Or is it something like developers been like, well, we think these are the safest because?
Um, some of both. Some of it is based, I think, research plots that are out there, people trying stuff. Um, and I just, you know, I remember I skimmed that chapter, chapter four, in the assertive document, so.
Then okay, let's experimenting with mint as well.
He's got.
I know, he's got a lot of things.
Well, yeah, and and again, I think next meeting, have him come in.
Yeah.
Um, and, uh, because I think we can pepper him with some of these questions of practicality and and what's really ready and not ready, but he's trying great stuff. He talked a lot about pig farmers too. That was more, I think, further south and, uh, um, all that, so, um.
That's hard to imagine.
Well, there's Cooney Cooney pigs is what Caleb has, and they they are grazing pigs. They don't.
They don't dig, oh, okay, yeah.
I'm surprised because pigs eat like all kinds of stuff.
I know.
And I think they would be interesting pigs.
Small, they're pretty small.
And one of the points that came out of the meeting and and some of the reading too is that, you know, if you, it's one thing to add something post hoc to an existing facility, and then you're limited a lot by what's there. The question is, what could be done if you think ahead of time? You know, maybe the pigs need just a little more height. We have to make sure the cables are buried or too high for a pig to chew on. And if you did that from the start, it wouldn't be that much more expensive. So that's part of why we're doing this is that, okay, maybe there's things if it's thought of ahead of time. Okay, so let's, so so you had some good questions. And so one thing is definitely the definition of what would count as an agricultural take thing. Um, I think you were rattled off a few things, Barb, one of which is, you know, what are their thoughts on the kinds of, uh, either farms or soil or whatever to favor or or protect from this kind of thing? Um, what else, um, was mentioned earlier that has now escaped my mind that we want to make sure that Brad and Will take to the egg committee? And we may generate a few more questions as we go along. Rattle off a couple of things.
Well, I I I think there's, you know, the economic question, you know, when they say they, you know, they they want more on agricultural takes. Are they looking, and maybe this would come out in their definition, or, you know, a list of, um, you know, some sense of their goals, you know, related to agricultural takes? Are they, are they looking for some guaranteed economic return that's not just, you know, leasing the land for solar? But it's, you know, an actual economic return from the agri part of agricultural takes, um, because that changes, you know, then our pollinators really, I mean, you're raising bees and honey, maybe. You know, so so I'd like to understand, you know, what what are the goals that people have?
And so some of the goals, I guess, what we'd add on is, as you say, do bees and honey count? Would there be, would they think there should be some, like, you know, income, you know, uh, revenue requirement?
Yeah, well, that's what I mean. From the agri part of the solar, right?
I'm I'm sure every farmer would want that. The question is to qualify for whatever carrots we might offer.
Right.
What would be the reasonable threshold, essentially, for economic return from the agri part of it?
Yeah. So, you know, so what extent, you know, are they concerned about, you know, more, um, you know, more future oriented, meaning, um, you know, retaining access to prime farmland or any kind of farmland into the future? Versus, um, you know, or compared to, you know, how do they, how how is the egg committee weighting this? Um, the, you know, immediate, you know, in, you know, real time economic return from agricultural takes in in a solar array. I mean, you know, what are they, what what are the concerns? You know, one one goal is is land preservation into the future, you know, farmland preservation into the future, making use of solar now, but, you know, preserving that as an option for future farmers. Another goal, maybe in opposition to that, would be economic return, in which case, you know, maybe they want, you know, just the highest lease price they can get, or the highest buyout price they can get from a from a solar operator. But if they're asking for more attention to agricultural takes, that makes me think that they have something that they want to be gaining from agricultural takes. So what is that?
Yeah, okay, so is that enough of that down? Um, and yeah, and I do know, and this is the way it sort of was put in the comp plan and propagated into solar law, which is the thought of sort of, we, the thinking was a few years ago, that a solar development is sort of like a a hold and place sort of thing. That if compared to a building, you can take the solar panels off again, and if you do it carefully, you haven't damaged the soil too much, not as much as when you place a building on it.
Okay.
And so the thirty or forty year lifetime was a way of holding the land in good shape that it otherwise might be built in the houses. And then they could farm it. Okay, so that's one definition of what you do.
Yeah.
But the agricultural tip one seems to be, it's in production all along. So if I'm sort of rephrasing what you're saying, that's the sense, that's what you're sort of.
Yeah, and and, you know, is it, is it production for the sake of the health of the soil, the health of the land, you know, to make the land even more viable for agriculture forty years down the road? Or is it for immediate economic return, you know, which then suggests to me a different type of agriculture on solar agricultural take land?
So we already know that developers have to maintain the land, right?
Well, they have to do vegetative maintenance. They have to keep things from shading the panels. But running over with a mower is one thing, which probably does do some soil compaction versus running over with sheep is another versus planting things that don't get tall in the first place is another way to go versus spraying it with herbicides.
Things that enhance the soil versus spraying.
Right, which is all kinds of ways to do that.
But I'm saying they budget money and they're gonna pay somebody to manage it.
Right.
What would, what would it be if we, if 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 what we were gonna say as as a town would say, well, we incentivize, you know, the first person who gets an option to do that is the farmer. They get the choice of making some money and possibly, possibly doing agricultural takes. May, they may decide just to mow it. But.
Well, right now, right, so I mean, obviously, the farmer who's leasing, say, um, in some sense, could have that role already.
Right.
Difference would be the town might insist they have the role or be able to provide some incentives, or the farmer decides they want to keep the land as partially farmed, that we say, okay, maybe it means that the pilot is lower, you know, the the or something like, you know, you have said, so we, there are ways to do more than just, say, the farmer gets first choice, um, that might help.
Might not be a land.
But that's the beginning. That's the other thing. And and Caleb's big in this too, that basically they've got, you know, developer has this spot, they gotta maintain the vegetation. So farmer over here comes to bring their sheep. And that's definitely true. Or there's just someone who's renting and leasing. You can you can lease the land too, even if you're growing crops. You could lease the land and not own it.
Right.
At which point you wanna be talking to ag markets, right? And to make sure that they, they they to qualify.
Uh, qualify for an ag exemption? Yeah, right. So that's a key question, again, Mr. Mean last time, that that Caleb has brought up repeatedly.
Okay.
And I think there's, I don't think there's an answer yet in in the state, but you put solar panels on something, it's considered industrial use, now you lose your ag exemption. Is that really the way things are going? I don't know if there's been any cases yet. I don't know if there's any decision. I don't know if the state has decided to make. I don't know anything about that.
Who who sponsored the, uh, the?
It was the old man asking hard questions. That was much.
I wish I could remember. I thought it was the state, but I
It was like.
The question is whether Jeff Keighley was involved, because he's usually, uh, spot, um, with those things and.
Agricultural and farmland protection board is who put on the event.
Who are they?
I do not know. It's a New York, I I think it's a New York state-based organization of some kind, but what it's state affiliation is, I do not know. Like, I, it's gonna, because I only wrote down the name rather than have the flyer here.
Can I just approach Jeff Keighley?
Sure.
Okay.
I mean, I think it's a, it's a great, it's a question for people in general. Maybe the town needs to have the answer. I would love to have it, but it's developing fields, and I think this question came up with the Yellow Barn development as well. Is some of that property has ag exemption currently? What's gonna happen now that they're developing it solar wise? And so like, there's a test case right there, and maybe he would know.
And then my question is, um, would the state really even object if they meet all the other requirements of being a farm? They're making a certain level of income.
Right.
Right? So right now, the state's requirements is it's got to be a certain number of acreage. It's gonna be a certain uh, income level for that acreage, uh, to qualify to get your exemption. Or that land is leased by a farmer who qualifies as a legit farmer, even though he doesn't own it.
If you leased a hundred acres and gotten a product in, you don't own the land. I get it.
Right, and and but the the state does not, at this time, require that you're making the minimum, like, all twenty thou, whatever it is, I think it's twenty, ten or twenty thousand dollars uh, a year from that piece of properties. Because if Farmer Joe is over here and he's making twenty thousand or more from his farm, he already gets the farmer exemption. He leases my land. I get the egg exemption, whether he makes an additional twenty thousand. So so I guess if we have agricultural takes over here and he Farmer Joe comes over and he manages it or he leases it, wouldn't that land automatically get the egg exemption?
And that's what Jeff Keighley is really.
I mean, that I don't, I mean, I don't think it's, it, I don't think it's the business of the state to micromanage how the farm is managed if it meets all the definitions of the farm for the farm exemption.
So I I I think, I think the issue may right there, and I think that's the way it ought to work. I mean, because the state has a dual goal of trying to raise the amount of, you know, reduced amount of fossil fuel used, you know, so it makes eminent sense them to do exactly what you said. On the other hand, they have a very longstanding assessment branch that sort of says, you're doing these kind of activities, that's non-farming, you're now industrial. And I don't know how the two things are colliding.
Right.
And maybe Jeff can.
Yeah, but he's pretty good at, um, spelling out for, um, like, remember he did a zoning, uh, seminar that I went to like over a year ago? And he was really good at pointing out which types of activity on a farm qualify as farm activity and which don't. And he and he really hit it down to some finer.
How do you spell his last name?
K E H O E. He is the person who, um, reviewed our egg plan, um, that's part of what.
If if you would approach him with the basic question of ag exemptions and agricultural take development, that would be great. And tell us what the state is thinking or what he knows. So that would be awesome.
Would would you wanna talk to him for an hour on Zoom? If you get the opportunity?
Uh, I don't know about an hour. It's possible. Yeah, yeah, if you want to.
I was some, like, a half hour even? After we hear from the egg committee, right?
Yeah. With the option to extend.
Can I ask a question about the Farmer Joe example?
Yeah.
So so Farmer Joe is doing legit farming on on some acreage, and then you've got a solar array, hire Farmer Joe to do the the vegetation maintenance.
Right.
Farmer Joe decides just to mow it, not collect it for hay or anything. Does that, does that count?
I I don't know, but from from a leasing standpoint, if he's leasing it, if Farmer Joe's leasing it, he's technically that that land, whoever owns the land gets the tax exemption.
Even even if Farmer Joe is ju, is just mowing it and letting the grass and legging.
Uh, that that's, that's a great question. So, yeah. The short answer in the practical world is yes, uh, from my experience. So like, if I go out there and just mow my fields, Tompkins County doesn't say anything. But if I miss a little bit and I got a little blueberry shrub or whatever they are, those honey berry shrubs, they come and say, well, that's no longer an ag field, and we're gonna take away your ag exemption. The reason I know this, they tried it on me. I said, you do this, we're gonna be fighting in court. Because I'm gonna be mowing that this fall and redoing that field. It's in rest right now. So anyway, so there is some battle because of the way the state of New York does the exemption. A lot of states will just take your overall assessment and and then take a percentage off. Tompkins County, as well as the state of New York, they have this convoluted formula based off of soil type. And then how much of that soil type is in what production? And it gets a little complicated.
I thought it's just a straight reduction. I didn't know.
No, it's it's stupid and it's a law of diminishing returns because that exemption keeps going down while the assessment keeps going up. So, yeah, I'm not happy with the way New York does the the egg exemption.
Doesn't Tompkins County get their egg exemption amounts from the state? That, like, based on soil type, isn't that uniformly set by the state?
Sort of, but then you have the soil and water district who then also say, okay, and they'll do, they'll re-update the soil maps and whatever.
But I assume the county is implementing what the state has legislated essentially. You're saying that the state determines the rate.
Yeah, the state determines the rate.
County is doing is saying.
The state determines the rate.
This is what you got of what?
So was it the assessors, assessment office that showed up?
Uh, so, yeah, there is assessment office and so on.
Right there. They're very educable.
Yeah.
Yeah, but.
There there was some disagreement
Yep.
Uh, about management of my farm.
We're not getting that at this meeting.
Right.
So afterwards, people have a beer over the corner, we can talk.
I can see, I can see how that happened here with agricultural takes, right? Because it's, you you're mixing farm with, then how are you managing the farm? And then how is that affecting your exemption? Because it comes down to who's do, does the state and everybody else have an interest in micromanaging the farm if you're still meeting the definition of the farm? Both from income, maybe it's that we have to require that they meet the income level from that farm, like, there is not just being mowed, but that they're meeting the ten thousand dollars or whatever it is of agricultural production from the farm.
And, yeah, and for your example, I mean, if 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 a farmer owned a plot of land, was farming in one part of it and getting the amount of money and just mowing the rest, the exemption probably applies to the whole property.
Yep.
But if that farmer, it feels weird if that farmer is leasing some land over there, and this year he decides not to farm it, but just to mow it, and not gonna get a hay, and that's still qualified. It feels very weird. Um, because, just because it's over there, not even his own land versus, it's, I don't know. All right, let's move on.
It seems like we are at the very beginning of
Yes.
of this, I mean, not even forever.
No, no, I I think the state, everyone's at very.
Country.
Exactly.
It's probably having this exact same conversation.
Yeah, I I think there's a lot of undefined, which is why, again, probably the the less definite we are, the better, because we'd be making the wrong choices almost certainly.
But things change rapidly.
Yeah.
That's why I like the Connecticut example, because it was
Yeah.
pretty general and advisory in some ways.
So, uh, my second question was on, um, compliance enforcement that that Guillermo brought up. And just as some background there, you know, during the construction phase of, um, a large solar project, um, there is provision for they call an agricultural monitor and an environmental monitor. And the agricultural monitor is there to make sure they're doing the right things. They were supposed to be doing, um, per the agricultural stuff, which there's a whole ag and markets document about how to protect the soil and how deep to put stuff and how to not compact it and how to keep topsoil segregated, all that kind of stuff. But that, they go away. I assume the products, and I think Guillermo's question was more ongoing. So this year, you built it, you did your farming. Who's to say four years from now, they're still doing that? And so who's checking up on that? So thoughts on that?
The egg committee can do some field trips.
Yeah, they probably, you'd probably have more success. You know, uh, the Association of Towns, uh, has a big conference every year and lots of panels. And one of the hot topics this year was how much the code officers have to do to, um, make sure people are doing what they are supposed to be doing. And it's making it harder and harder to get code officers because the burden is impossible to meet.
Okay.
Just saying this.
Well, no, I think it's actually what, because I think the normal answer, the first answer, and the first answer comes to me is, that's the code officer's job. Right? I mean, they're there for essentially compliance with town laws. On the other hand, I realize, I mean, the town of Caroline, it's it's been a challenge to keep because it's a code officer. Actually, they're very much overworked and underpaid.
Well, and would they have the right expertise?
Right, cause they are, you know, I think you probably come more on the building trades sort of profession, right? They're checking up as you're building and everything, so um if not the code officer, who then?
You know, how many, how many, how many solar farms do we have right now?
How many do we have? So so I mean, good question, zero in Caroline.
Zero.
With one that's been proposed and pulled back and then re-proposed, and like I said, now in I don't know what state. Um, because again, it's economic feasibility fluctuates with the the uh tax incentives that are available. So.
This is a possible one.
Yeah.
And then on top of that, how with the existing infrastructure, how many more could the town get?
Yeah, the town is definitely power line limited, in particular, what you're looking for is the three-phase power lines and substations. If we were lancing, it would be
Right.
more of a concern. Uh, I think this is sort of the the looking to the future sort of question.
And that that's what I was thinking, like, if we're talking about a person, right now, that person would get basically no extra work.
Oh, right, right, no, there'd be, there's no, right, this is a.
In the next five years, they may have one or possibly two places to look at.
Well, how small does Caleb go?
I mean, how big of a place is he?
How small of an installation?
I don't know, he, I mean, any one that's fenced in, he'll try to get.
Yeah, yeah, I think it it turns simply great, and you're right, it could be various sizes. Uh, to your point, true, um. But to Will's point, we still need someone who's capable of determining what's going on. And I couldn't have was the right person.
The Dandy folks came in, where I think you were at that meeting where they were talking about their uh policing the easements, the conservation, were you there? I would go back and read the minutes, and they had a way of having um inspections and enforcements without um leaning on uh a town committee or a town employee to do it.
Yeah, so you're talking about conservation easements? Cause yeah, conservation easements are enforced by their owns the easement, which is usually like finger lands trust or some other land trust.
Well, but in the town, in case of Dandy, they have a a system now, and this is what you're talking about. They pass a thing, I'm not gonna go, but the town is getting, they're trying to preserve open space in the town. And so they're granting easements, the town is granting.
Okay.
Anywhere from short term to long term promises to not develop your land. And the question I think is who's monitoring those, and the town had some.
It's a a community group that um does it, they walk the land and
True.
you know, they they're highly moving.
Sure, so it'd basically be like, it'd basically be like an uh another committee of the town.
The ag committee should do it.
I I think it would be, you know.
Well, I I would tend to agree, but I'm not a observer, so.
Yeah, no, no, I mean, it on the one hand, seriously, they would be the best. Um, for me, they probably already know the people who are either farming because they own it or leased it. Um, and you know, they also have the expertise to say, you know, they're kinda cheating there, they're not really doing what they said or whatever. Other hand, farmers tend to be busy, um, you know, but there could be a uh, you know, a friends of the agricultural takes of Caroline.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, I would pay to go to the code officer first, but I think that these questions do, and I think to your point, you're right, I mean, it's not an immediate large burden, it should be a question philosophically in the future, and at that point, something different could be done. Okay.
And as it looks like, town of Caroline is not ever going to be prime for anyways.
Probably not, I mean, not unless, you know, I I who knows what the future will bring in terms of suddenly we really need to do this and, you know, state's offering money every which way to have it happen, and even little old Caroline uh gets it. Um, you know, uh, or some wealthy businessman says, I'm gonna build power lines in Caroline so that it's been, you know, the marginal end in Caroline could be, I don't know, you know, I'm depending theories, but yeah, who knows? But I think it's unlikely to be a significant development in this community in the next five or 10 years from everything I've seen, but I'm not an expert. So, and you're right, we don't worry too much about the burden of that. Alright, so let's let's go to this this thing um in terms of what kinds of things one might say, it's from the specific to the general. We'll go, we're not really ready, I need to say a lot, but let's look at the Connecticut documents. Um, I have a copy of here and you may have some there. So in particular, they are talking that this is required, I think, on um prime farmland. Yeah, projects that impact prime farmland that are two megawatts or more in size are required to comply with this. So they made the decision that it would be prime farmland um that it applied to. And um they say that on prime farmland, soil disturbances and soil compaction shall be minimized. And we already have that requirement in our solar law as a general point, not just to do any kind of solar development that it has to happen.
Do we have what they say a vegetation and soil management plan developed for the lifetime of the solar project?
I believe we do, and indeed, what we said was, I I I believe it's like no herbicides and that um grazing is preferred to mowing, I think, again, I should people that, but yes, we do, we did, we did, at least on the larger ones, we spoke to vegetation management.
Yeah, yeah, I think we were um had something about um the vegetation that is selected. I had to meet certain category, be in certain categories. And also be still be there five years later.
And there was some specific things not to grow because they were toxic to grazing animals. And that came from someone in Cornell through John, John and Comstock was helping, so you know, again, we, you know, we were foresightful for what was there four years ago or whatever, but I don't remember the details. And so Will has a better memory than I do on that.
Well, that was it for tonight.
Um, now, what we don't certainly say, and I just assume always, what they say in their point two, is the solar array shall not interfere with the continued use of land beneath for agricultural purposes.
I think that's a strong statement, just from standpoint of, from my point of view, the the solar array, of course, is going to interfere in some way, I mean, that's.
What what does interfere mean? No disturbance or minimal disturbance or some disturbance is, I don't know.
Right, or you you kind of have to modify your farming somehow, cause you're not gonna come through with a big combine.
Well, again, this is, you know, for context, this is prime farmland only, it's not any farmland. And the second part of that sentence says, an agricultural takes farm plan shall be developed for the lifetime of the solar project. So so that to me is a key issue, you know, they're requiring on anything in whole or in part having to do with prime farmland, that an agricultural takes farm plan is required. And that's a, that's a question, you know, that I mean, just that's a basic question, is that something we wanna do or would we wanna encourage it?
Having an agricultural take farm plan is probably a good thing and essential thing. I just think saying this shall not interfere with it, well, I'm like, of course. By definition, has to.
But but the the key question, as as Bart put it, is, you know, do we feel that we want to mandate that anything built on prime farmland be an agricultural take installation essentially, and therefore have this plan? Um, or do we simply say, you know, we encourage this to be done? Um, and maybe even encourage it by saying projects that do do so, you know, will have a thirty percent reduction in the required pilot or something like that, you know, or we'll see favorable favorable consideration in the pilot negotiations. Uh, or or whatever, you know, you know, again, using using a carrot um as opposed to requirement. I mean, I don't know how people, so first off, is it, should it ever be required, if so, on prime farmland? If it's gonna be encouraged, what do we want to do to encourage? I open the floor to thoughts.
I would give a hard time with the required because um that would be discouraging the solar. One day and.
Potentially, I mean, that's the key question.
Potentially, but I I mean, we require, you know, building permits to build a house, and some people from building a house. I think requiring some sort of farm plan, agricultural take plan. I don't, if it's gonna happen on a prime farm land, I don't think we'll stop it. Cause those developers are gonna have a plan.
Oh, okay, so they're saying if it's on, if your solar development is
On prime farm.
Prime farm land, but it doesn't apply if the solar development is on some other type of land.
Well, that's how Connecticut, again, that's an open question for Caroline.
Right.
You know, uh, you know, there would be potential benefits saying, no, you know what? Our prime farmland is gonna retain, is gonna be still farmed. You can do this in like the just subprime farmland we want, you know, and then in the really marginal land, we don't care what to do. I mean, that's another possible way to go.
Yeah.
I'm not necessarily advocating that, but.
I think their prime farmer is mostly really wet. Isn't it? I mean, we we've seen.
Was it flat?
Like flat?
No, it was, it's all, well, I mean, you know, half of it is Longbridge, seventy-nine has houses on it right now. I mean, at least half, I mean, the other half, the other good chunk is in, you know, is now Brooklyndale. Um, and and like the 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 schools should never been built, right on top of that really nice prime farmland, but it was. You know, but um not too too far astray. Right, that is the question, do we do we require it someplace? I think, you know, one argument be, if they, if a developer really wants to develop, they will figure out a way, you know, to 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 make it work um in in the town. But I think that we aren't quite, I think it's very likely we aren't at that point, that there's plenty of other places to go right now. So, but on the hand, maybe we don't care, maybe if you're gonna be here, we do require that, so that's essentially what I think we can argue with ourselves a bit for a bit.
Requiring farm plan for prime land would still give the developers an option if they don't wanna do that to go to, so.
Less prime.
Yeah, less prime, so it'd still give them an out without really, it's like mandating something, but it's not forcing.
Right.
And the other question, I guess, this would be maybe a question for Caleb, is requiring a farm plan even something discourages the developers? We're assuming it will.
Well, but having the farm plan theoretically means that you're doing some sort of agricultural take installation.
Right.
I mean, you could, my farm plan is, I'm not gonna do anything but mow the panels, is probably not sort of farm plan we're talking about.
Hey, so you're you're referring then to the Solar Sign Plan Law, or are you referring to more just that specifically agricultural takes?
Well, the the Connecticut law requires an agricultural takes farm plan.
Right, for.
Which, for, yeah, I'm when you're, when you're dealing with prime farmland.
For for any solar installation.
So, so, and but this gets back to where the definition was at being key, because if uh, you know, grazing sheep under panels at normal full density qualifies, which it may well do, then there is no discouragement, as you said, they gotta, they gotta make in the vegetation somehow, and so they can do that on prime farmland and everybody be happy. Um, if on the hand, we're thinking more like, well, no, you you're gonna space the panels out a little bit more and raise them up a bit so that you can have some fruit trees over here and the cows can get under there, and there's gonna be hit on the solar amount. But the farmer is better off, cause they get both the ag income and the solar income. That's where I think the developer might walk away from it, you know, if they, um, at some point.
Developer's not gonna care what kind of farming, if they're being mandated to do it, they're gonna do the easiest and cheapest one that they can put in their plan.
And I and I I don't, I just don't think we know enough, uh, one, about what kind of crops or kind of agriculture in general works well and will work well in the future associated with solar facilities. Plus, taking into consideration the type of land that's in Caroline, I don't think we can predict that fruit trees would even be a viable option, I mean, or anything, you know, any particular thing would be a viable option.
A lot of people um switch what they're doing for farming um within a thirty years span. Yeah, so.
So maybe it has to, anything in prime farmland would have to encompass more options.
You would expect people to go with the market, you know, or go with what's available to do. I mean, everybody's making their decisions year by year now, right?
So the town has broadly speaking, three kinds of land. Um, there's prime farmland, there's also another category called prime farmland if drained, because it's just too wet. So let's call both those prime farmland. Then there's something called farmland of statewide importance, and these are all capitalized terms. These are things defined by you, the state of New York or the town of Caroline or something, but there's a a certain set of soils that are of state of importance. The latter category is actually a vast part of Caroline. There's not a lot that isn't farmland of statewide importance, and then there's other stuff that isn't particularly that. So we could just, yeah, make requirement on prime farmland. I don't, again, I'm 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 not yet there deciding one or the other, but I'm now gonna throw the question, well, what about you know, farmland of statewide importance? Is that something we'd want to require or somehow figure out a way to encourage agricultural takes on, or do we not care um about that land?
Does New York do anything, say anything about farmland of statewide importance?
For, in what way, in general or for?
Well, I mean, specific to solar or in general regarding what should be done to try and reserve or maintain farmland of statewide importance.
Yeah, uh, good question, as always.
What is that kind of, obviously, that's not prime farmland, so it's everything else that is open.
It's no, it cause, cause you know, there's stuff that's just not good for farming, and that's, if you look at a map somewhere in there, it's like white on our town map, but
So here's the definition. Well, this is a In New York, farmland of statewide importance refers to land that doesn't meet the criteria for for prime farmland, but is still considered valuable for food, feed, fiber, forage, and oil seed crop production. Often includes soils that nearly meet prime farmland criteria and can produce high yields with proper management.
Meaning amendment, it it requires inputs.
And 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 soil type gets in there somewhere, but I like this. So then they say, yeah, soil, da 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 da, right, it's all in there, but so, yeah, so that's so beyond that sort of hopeful language of that that can be profitable or, you know, whatever, that's what I remember hearing. I don't know of anything other than like, it's a good idea to preserve it. I don't think there's anything more specific in the state, we can probably search around with that. When we're doing the zoning stuff, we decided not to say anything about that in part because it is so much of the town that at that point, you know, it starts to impact a lot of of land, and it didn't seem appropriate to do.
Sounds like we need to talk to a developer or or someone who knows a bit about the engineering behind it, because if it is a huge, huge change to raise them up and to make it easier for other types of of agriculture underneath, that would probably be an instant no to most of them. But if it isn't, if it's just
Yeah.
some change.
Um, yeah, and the stuff I said, it says, there is of course higher capital expenditures with this, which can be discouraging. I didn't see, they never quantified it, and I don't, you know, so, yeah, it came the the word on the street of, yeah, that's really a pain. Or, oh, yeah, that's that's, we don't wanna do that, but we could, I guess, it'd be nice to know.
I've seen several solar farms and they have a very similar look to them. So maybe they're just doing what the industry standard is right now, and not really looking for new ideas or things, because this is the way everyone's doing it, it's the easiest way and.
I I think, yeah, I mean, again, what I've read, the easiest way, uh, you put the panels, you know, just so dense. And in snowy country like New York, you put them thirty or thirty-six inches above ground on the lowest edge, and if you're in the south, you put them twenty inches. I mean, that's kind of what was said in this stuff, you know, so, yeah, I think it's, that's about as exotic as it gets. But then there are those who want to keep farming the land, and so a bunch of other stuff is being tried. Um, and there's a whole charting of those things about the decrease in solar production for these different panel arrangements for their power or whatever, you know. So people are starting to look at it, but there's no real numbers.
I can see just raising them up, it's just gonna cost a lot of extra money.
Yeah, yeah.
There's the steel, whatever is keeping them up, so. Definitely an actual cost.
Right, so it won't be done voluntarily, if the town feels a value, we either have Right, so it won't be done voluntarily. If the town feels a value, we either have to provide a benefit to developer. That has reduced their cost in some way. Or, be more with heaven and say, if you wanna build here, you've gotta do it this way. And that's why I keep raising up the carrots and sticks thing, cause, cause no matter what we do. Other than just grazing sheep on the thing as it is now, or some other thing like that, it's gonna be more expensive to develop it. Solar.
What could, what could be a carrot?
Um, typically, these places don't pay property taxes. They pay a payment in lieu of taxes, a pilot. And the town negotiates that. The only carrot I know is that one.
Okay.
But I, I, I'm open to suggestions. I, I don't know what else. I mean, theoretically, if this was like a really arduous process, you could say, we'll give you expedited review. I don't think Caroline's gonna have that arduous a process. But that would be the other thing, is you, you reduce the requirements. You can say, that if we had some requirements, like. If you're building the solar development, you must also do X, Y, and Z, like stay so far away from. Houses or whatever, then you can relax that requirement, say, but if you're going to do an agricultural takes installation, we'll reduce these regulatory burdens. I don't think we have those burdens to relax. Um, though we can look at our solar law along those lines and see. So the only. Encourage, I can see is, is, is the pilot.
Well, which could be, uh, significant.
Oh, absolutely. If, if the town, you know, the flip side is, that means the town is not getting those dollars. And, and we're not getting it, because we said it was good to encourage agricultural takes, and, and is the town really willing?
Well, I mean, we're, I guess my question in terms of that pilot is, was that money that we were getting before? So like, you're saying, well, we're not getting those tax dollars, but were we getting them before they came in, or is it just that it's deferred money?
You see, okay, so, good question. It depends, I assume, on the way the land has been used. So let's say it was farmland. Now it was bringing in tax revenue, um, it's ag exemption, so in terms of the property tax. It's, it's at a reduced rate, but it's some number. Um, I don't know, cause I just not up on this stuff. I don't think the town gets. Any other kind of income tax, sales tax, I mean, there's a state sales tax, so like if a farmer sells a bunch of stuff. They must pay sale, do they pay sales tax to the state?
No.
Or the counties?
No.
Or, cause food generally isn't taxed.
Food is not taxed, but if it's processed, um, certain, certain processed products get taxed.
Okay, so if someone were butchering a lot of meat or making a lot of cheese. Um, then there, I, I get some of that sales tax revenue gets shared back to the county and then to the town, I think. Michelle?
I don't know, I haven't seen any figures.
Anyway.
Like, we're getting this amount of money or something, like I haven't seen that in the budget.
So we definitely get property tax, and, and all property is taxed in some way, unless it's, of course, state land or something like that, so. Then let's see, put the solar development on it. Um, as a rule, the pilot is lower than the taxes would have been, cause otherwise, why the hell are you doing a pilot? You just tax them, and as I think I pointed out last time, the problem is that the taxes are based on assessment, and no one really knows how to assess. These solar developments yet, and so there's a big open question as to towns doing all kinds of different things to assess it. And there's been court cases, and who knows? Anyway, leaving that spaghetti aside. You're probably getting something less than the ag assessment rate, because that's how you, you wanted to encourage this development, and so you gave a break. How much taxes be?
There's tabs on the electricity generated.
Where did that go?
Um, it's, uh, I, um, I know it's there. Cause it was a big deal that Cornell got exempt from paying their retail tax. Um, the electricity generated and driving. Um, and it's, it's a lot of money. It, yeah, there's a lot of money in electricity. Way too much.
But that's by New York State taxing?
I, it, I think it's, it's whatever retail sales are, so. I, I don't know how the town gets county.
I, I think there's some sharing thing, and I don't know, maybe.
Yeah, there's definitely a sharing thing, but I don't know how they apportion it.
But, and to complete my answer to you. Well, well, but so again, that's typical, so again, typical example of a pilot, we want industry X two to locate here, you know. And so normally you'd be, you know, you, you make widgets, okay, you tax at this rate, but we really want your plant here. We'll get you, you know, a, a thirty percent break, uh, in the first year, but that's gonna dwindle. And by the end of forty years, you'll be paying the normal tax rate. That, that's standard. Um, with the solar stuff, again, it was a farm field. There was a, a, a rate at which it was being taxed as farm use, and then the ag exemption. This is the question you're gonna try to find out. Now, it's considered maybe industrial use. And maybe it's gonna be valued differently, and maybe there will be a certain tax revenue that would be higher than what was coming off it as, as an ag property, I don't know. But then what we're saying is, whatever that number would have been. If you're, if, we might encourage an, uh, agricultural tag installation, we're gonna get you a break on the money you would have paid. Therefore, the town is definitely getting less money than if they didn't do agricultural takes. But whether they're getting more or less money than before any solar development in, I can't answer. Just by what, with, how, what the heck are they doing with ag exemptions and, and solar development on ag property? That'd be great.
Yeah, but it's gonna be, I mean, you, I'll, I'll think it through, but I, I can see already. It's gonna start with county, uh, tax, because the, the value is. Putting, just putting the panels up, the assessors will step in. And then automatically puts it on property, and then on top of that, there'll be the retail. That the developer will pay the retail sales tax, which whatever it is here, what is it here? I don't know.
Eight percent, but yeah.
Yeah, but compared to property tax, you know, that's a lot of money. Just, I, I'll figure.
My question is, does the town have any authority in this?
Well, in terms of negotiating a pilot, the town has all the authority. Um, as far as I know, yeah, that's a town thing. Um, and indeed, I'm wondering, because see, the only time it would have come up is with this project. That potentially is going in on Old Seventy-Six Road, and I don't know if it got, cause I know Mark asked me a question of whether we were crying, requiring a pilot or not. And there is a clause in it that does say that that it'd be a pilot, and I don't know if the town ever actually entered into negotiations with the developer. They don't know if it probably got to that point.
I have, yeah, I haven't seen anything about it, so.
But, um, yes, no, that, so the other background that was mentioned last meeting, guys missed, was that. Um, because of this mess, and I started developing a model. That said, here's how land and solar development is to be valued. And I don't know who objected, if it was a landowner or if it was a developer, but it went to court and the judge threw out Nasser's model. And so New York State is back where they were. There is no accepted valuation of land and solar development. And that I'm aware of. That's, that's my understanding of the current state of things. All right, let's finish going through this one document, and then that'll be it for, for tonight, and we'll, we'll pick up next meeting. I will try to get Caleb in, I think, to talk to us next meeting. If it turns out Jeff would like to zoom that meeting, great, or it could be the meeting after that. Um, you know, then I'll try to get Guillermo in the meeting after that, and then from there, we'll sort of. See what else we, we need to, to learn about or do, but.
Um, Brad, do you know when A, the A committee is gonna be again? Okay.
Okay, so the other two points in there are sort of, first part is that if the solar project is sold. Basically, it continues as an agricultural take project, so the, the, the buyer has to assume, I think, the plan. Um, and also decommitting responsibilities, and that part is in our existing sort of law too, you know, they, they have to take on all that part. And right, that they're, they also get, uh, there's a permission for the state to go in there and get data. Cause all this is so experimental, everyone wants info, so. All right, so then they say, a complete application includes the following, the, the farm plan. Um, a vegetation soil management plan prepared by soil scientists, that's, um. Uh, so a health assessment, um. Okay, and then it says, how the applicant shall at a minimum provide ecosystem services and or sustainable landscaping couses. That preserve and or improve soil quality, including without limit to crop plans. Rotation grazing of livestock, pollinator habitats and apiaries. So again, they specifically allow pollinator and, and beekeeping as, um, acceptable land. Um, managed for agricultural takes plan. Um. And then basically, a, a, a way that, you know, if, if it's been, if it's currently in ag production or for, hasn't for a while, then. Um, basically a statement that how it's gonna be available for farming after the project is decommissioned. That they keep things in good shape. So that's their, their submission requirements. And then, and this is, I think, the, the key, uh, for us to talk about for a little while. Is the following design standards are encouraged, but they're not required, um, and here's what they talk about. Um, the height and the spacing is sufficient to accommodate crop-specific needs. You know, sunlight machinery, worker accessibility, so not, no specifics on height, but you know, that there's some thing. That has been planned to allow that. That the road width between the panels is sufficient to allow for continued production of crops. And accommodate farming equipment to continue agricultural production. As we talked about last week, you know, that, you know, getting a tractor in and around and enough turning rates at the end of the row. And that there's not a cableway right down the middle of the aisle, there's all kinds of things to think about, you're gonna be riding a tractor around. The need for access to and from the site for vehicles with trailers or farming equipment that has been considered. Plans for access to water for grazing or vegetation, so if you're gonna keep a bunch of sheep there, or cows or whatever, you know, they need water. Uh, that the amount of sunlight reduction, uh, from the panels is compatible with the proposed agricultural products. And that there's sufficient sunlight to sustain what you're leaving. Uh, that the height of the panels is adequate to accommodate livestock, uh, and or row crop production. Uh, vertical foot, foot of the panels, so. That last one is normally solar panels put and, you know, tilted. Uh, they can, um, tilt sometimes, sometimes they can tilt this way or this way or both. Um, so you can either have an untracked system where they're fixed, you can have a tracked system where they tilt, or two axis system when they tilt different ways. Or you can stick the panel this way, straight up and down. That's what I mean by the vertical panel. And it's a lot less efficient in terms of gaining solar power, but you put solar panel on both sides. As far as farm equipment's concerned, that's awesome, cause you go with zoop, zoop, and so it's the least impact on the agricultural landscape. So that would work in a, in a space where the prime focus, I think, was ag. And you're just looking to get some solar gain, but it's, some of the numbers are working out, I think that. I don't know how often it's actually used in practice for a developer. Uh, and the last two is right, that the fixed tilt of tracking arrays are raised substantially above the ground. Uh, that to me seems to duplicate the elevations adequately to accommodate lifestyle. And lastly, transparent panel or other progressive designs, which have the potential to allow agricultural take systems. Support crops with high sunlight needs. So I guess, yeah, there is some work on, on clear panels now. As a physicist, you know, energy and energy, so it must be that they're capturing. UV or some wavelength, the photon that is not what the plant is using, otherwise transparent panels don't do any good. So I'm assuming that, that, you know, that the wavelengths are different enough that you can do that, but I.
Well, it's just a shade net effect. So you can grow stuff under a shade net, right, and you can reduce your sunlight by, right, X number of percent. A lot of plants do actually really great, some do even better when you put them under a shade net of, let's say, thirty percent shade. Um, and so, yeah, so some.
Yeah, so they could do that, so it only intercepts a fraction of the incoming.
Yeah. There is a, there is a paper on that in, in fruit tree production, uh, on Nicer's website or something, they had a study.
And I think some of the other advancements will probably be in farm equipment. For work under panels.
Yeah, that makes sense.
I can't help but think that if they're willing to apply this model down to two megawatts. Um, why are we looking at what developers are willing to do? And providing the incentives to developers and not looking at what farmers are willing to do. And applying these incentives to farmers who know the requirements. Cause most of the, uh, utilities have people who know what to do. And they want it. They, they want the solar to some extent. It, it's not just, you know, a fan, that the utilities are going in this direction, they know. They want it.
So some of that's true, I understand what you're saying, but are you saying that you want the farmer to build the solar? See the right or?
Um, direct your incentives at the, the farmers, cause they, they can. E- even the utilities, they're gonna subcontract out most of the work anyway.
Sure.
So the people are there to, to do that, and most farmers are quick to, to, you know. To learn management skills for that kind of thing.
Sure.
I think it's serious, I mean, you know, at, at the twenty-five, thirty, forty megawatt. Scale size, that, that's the big stuff that, you know, or, you know, the, the renewable energy branch of New York State regulates. But the, right, that's where the utilities are most interested in getting a big bang for their bucks, they're making a big investment in the big thing. But maybe if this can work on a two, three, or four megawatt scale, that's more appropriate for. Uh, I don't know, the acres, like, you know, I want a two hundred acre farm where you're primarily farming. And you, if you could provide an incentive to the farmer to mostly still farm, but get some solar production. Not rely on a developer who's willing to sacrifice some production to allow a little farming.
Yeah, yep, and it, it would be a boon to the, the farmer.
But who would, I mean, I guess, who would finance the, the solar installation is my question. I mean, if you're providing an incentive to the farmer, the same tax breaks or whatever, additional tax breaks. Um, a lot of farmers aren't gonna necessarily have the cash on hand to install, build a, a solar array. They're gonna require, they're gonna lean on the developer, whomever, to come in and say, hey, we'll work with you, we'll, we'll. We'll pay for this installation, uh, as long as you're willing to work with us. So I guess that's my question would be like, I think it's great what you're saying, let's say this.
Think where's the block? Yeah, I know that it's high capital front end.
Right, a lot of farmers don't have a lot, at, at least in this area.
But that's where all the money available to farmers is, uh, for, I mean, all this equipment you need. Is high capital front end, right? So there's already an infrastructure for loaning capital.
Sure.
For that kind of a project.
Well, the one thing I do see is that the town has relatively few tools to help that, I think. And again, I'm willing to be educated, but again, you know. The, you know, there is an established mechanism through the pilot for the town to give incentives to companies and businesses. But like the ag assessment, the ag, that, that's established by the state. You know, again, the town, you know, essentially, you know, uses it, but we're not allowed, the town's not allowed to, to assess property the way it wants to. You know, we can't say, oh, we like what farmers are doing, we're gonna assess them at fifty percent, can't do that. You know, we like shoe factories, we're gonna assess them at, you know, the, you know, town can't do that, against the law.
But you can give, um, additional tax exemptions, you can't assess them differently. But you can just like, you know, what's that?
Uh, sorry, I just.
Maybe there's some limited, I mean, like, like, there's some things that this town passes that sort of helps give maybe senior citizens. I think all of that has to be enabled in state legislation, my understanding, but I'm, I'm not very well educated on this. I don't know how much.
Yeah, you're, you're right, and there's, there, and there is a. Uh, each, uh, it's either town or county, it establishes the cap. Uh, school districts establish a cap, towns can, um. Put their own cap on it, um.
Cap on what?
On how much the exemption can go up to and what are the thresholds.
Yes, and what do you know about exemptions or?
In terms of, so there are different, yeah, so my understanding, yeah, there are state level of, you know, exemptions. But then each county or town adopts them or not. So we don't, I know Tompkins County doesn't adopt all of the various. So we don't, I know Tompkins County doesn't adopt all of the various exemptions are available to farmers statewide, for example. And um uh why, I don't know, but uh and how that all plays out, I have no idea. All I do know is that I've inquired about, I was like, I've I've looked on New York State's website and they're like, oh, there there's these exemptions. But then when you look or get down to Tompkins County level, how we don't actually offer that exemption, we don't offer this exemption or this exemption. So there's different exemptions for property, not necessarily specifically speaking farms, but they're not always adopted by every town or county. Now, can a town or county independently without a prior approval from the state or wherever, uh adopt its own tax exemption for X, Y, or Z? I don't know. I don't know. I mean, that would be a good question.
I'm pretty sure the answer is no. It's worth a very, because I sort of went down that road sometime like eight years ago. It's why it's so fuzzy in my mind. I think the answer is no, that it has to be established in state law.
Okay.
Uh cuz like there's a certain section that has to do with like real estate tax or something like that when property is bought or sold. And towns are allowed to, again, adopt and not, yeah, you know, to be in or out of that. So what would be nice is if there is like the state establishing one for for, you know, uh renewable energy development or solar development. And enable towns to adopt or not adopt a lower rate for agricultural tax or something, you know. You have worthwhile resolution for the town to pass perhaps to ask the state to create the.
Again, you you're welcome to bring it to the town board.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh maybe the Danby model, cuz they man, that's what they managed to do.
Right, so what they have done is done something a little bit different, which is um uh an easement. And towns, I believe, are allowed to grant easements. And um just like the land, famous land trust does. Uh what's a little weird is often easements are like in perpetuity. But um Danby has sort of time limited easements, like you can promise not to develop a product fifteen years, you get a certain small reduction. If you problem, not develop for thirty years, you get a bigger reduction, that kind of thing.
So you're gonna do an easement with solar?
Right, possibly. I don't know.
Is there any law against that?
I don't know.
Danby has special staff is that way, but well, now that they're there, maybe we could be. Uh added on.
I mean, those who have been on this meeting before, I'll know it's been in the back of my.
I have a lot of the about this stuff, honestly, it's never come up.
It's in the back of my mind and it was mentioned in the comp plan that maybe the town of Caroline would do a similar easement thing to what Danby's doing. I I don't know for sure uh if we should or could or would.
I mean.
But it'd be one way of encouraging the maintenance of of green space, undeveloped space. That is one mechanism. Uh cuz people are always complaining is, you know, what do I get? All you guys do is restrict. You don't give me anything for it. That's a way of giving something to to encourage behavior you'd like to see.
I mean, I I don't, I'm not sure it's easy for the town to give up revenue, let let me take it that way. You know, the budget's like pretty tight and and we have a number of, a couple of very large projects like, you know, broadband and the trail and stuff that takes up a lot of money.
So so realistically, and this is, I think, um a an equity question. It's really a tax shift question.
Yeah.
Because the town wouldn't be wanting to get the same revenue. And if if you reduce the property valuation of certain properties and you generate the same revenue, therefore you you raise the levy overall. But the way it shifted is, for example, if it's on undeveloped property, you're shifting it from those who own lar, maybe large undeveloped rural properties onto those that that own buildings and developed property. And there's an equity question of whether that's the right thing to do. On the other hand, the town has often said we value open space. I love driving down Route Seventy Nine and seeing all that nice farm field. Well, the farmer is the one who maintained that for you to have that view, so maybe you homeowner should pay more. I mean, so there's an open question of whether it's the right way to go or not.
But doesn't the county, is the county responsible for that? I don't think the town's responsible for the assessment.
Uh the assessment, the town is responsible for the levy. Right, the town says, our town budget is X dollars. You divide the X dollars by the assessed value and that gives you the the rate at which property is taxed. That's what the town town does. And so if we gave uh exemptions to certain property, because they had solar stuff on it or because they were open space. Uh if the town had to raise the same amount of money, you'd have to raise the rate, raise the levy um to generate the same number of dollars, and that might mean you go over the two percent allowed increase or whatever, but you know, but anyway, it would effectively shift money from one group of town residents to another group of town residents. It wouldn't necessarily lower the town income. But you'd have to do it by raising the levy rate. So, uh anyway, why we have never gone there is it's a a a big pickle, but Danby's doing it. And they did, they worked out how much is this gonna raise person B's taxes compared to person C, and they sort of went through some of that debate and discussion.
I think property taxes are more.
You said what?
Property taxes is immoral.
Well, there there I, you know, there's plenty of argument for that too, given that that the fact that we have property business, it means you have the income to pay. Right, so you know, those are very different, right, right. It it historical in terms of ages past when, you know, I you can have this, but I've talked to the assessor who says, on the other hand, he knows of all kinds of sticky ways in which people with income hide their income and get tax breaks cleverly, so he actually thinks that property tax is more equitable than an income tax.
So he doesn't live in.
No, no, so I think that, yeah, I mean, I I get it and, yeah. Okay, so I agree, and I think Barbara suggested, you know, that this sort of general thing that say things should be four feet above the ground or whatever. It's a little bit more farmer centered and it talks about, you know, sufficient to accommodate crop specific needs. And they're saying, you guys develop a plan for this parcel that you're developing and bring it to us and, you know, sort of thing.
I think you might, we might consider a minimum. Just.
Minimum what?
A minimum, I
Underneath panels or or?
Yep, because things do change and at least if there is a minimum, you keep a certain number, you keep more possibilities in there running.
How would you develop that minimum?
Uh well, that would be tricky, but you would have to find out what people ke- have found they can uh do under those panels. So I mean, for 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 sheep, of course, they already know what the number is.
I mean, my concern more that mean along those lines, you don't know that what you're doing for the next five years is what you wanna do five years later. Um and and at that point, whatever panels were set up might preclude the kind of farming someone else wants to do ten years later. Uh but I think you're stuck cuz indeed, when you build a solar array, you you built it. I don't, you know, and so, yeah, we we maybe the argument we would say is, yeah, I think, and I think it's probably premature to know this. You wanna demand at least four feet. Because that opens up, you know, cuz right now you only need two feet for sheep, fine, but that does open up some possibilities for other crop farming in the future when you no longer do sheep or the sheep industry collapses cuz everyone's doing sheep. Um I get it, I think it's a good point, but I I would have a hard time picking a number as Barb suggested, I and that's the key.
I just asked how you would do it.
Yeah.
Like I said, I think the other thing is, is that farming equipment is going to it's gonna, yeah, it's gonna evolve to, I mean, even even the things I've seen Caleb get like, cuz he has to mow some things that the sheep don't get, sheep don't eat everything. And so he bought like some sort of weird European mower that's meant for. The Europeans have this.
Was that?
The Europeans.
Yeah, well, they're used to small. Yeah, it was meant for like hillside or or uh steep, steep things. It's it's really maneuverable, it can crab walk and it's really short. He took off the cab so he can actually drive under panels. So he he's already using what's already out there, but people, companies are gonna create, if there's an industry here, companies are gonna create things, maybe even things that can bale hay from under a, from under a panel, you never know. The um the college of arts and life sciences has been doing some research about what kind of crops to grow where. And they said the only reason they could do it was they happen to have this particularly small tractor. And it worked in some of these existing sites that otherwise wouldn't. They said, you know, farmers with a normal sized tractor can't do this. Um but like you say, then maybe it'll be a market for it. Or at least for the specialty guys who go around the country, maintain, doing vegetative maintenance for all the solar farms.
If there's money to be made, someone will figure out how to do it.
So um the one comment I heard is that maybe upon some reflection and thinking and figuring out maybe a way, we would specify some minimum um clearance below the panels. Any other comments on the the Connecticut wording?
My brain's done.
Yeah, yeah, that's right. So I think it's a good stopping point. Think about some more. I will reach out to Caleb and see if he is willing to, you know, talk right in person, so it consumes as well. You can contact um Jeff Teo and I'm happy to have him in any of the next couple of meetings, uh if he wants to talk to us or he can just give you information. Or he may say, I know nothing, I know, but if you think, if he would like to talk to us about something related to assessments and agricultural tax, great, happy to have that conversation. Our next meeting, we had already tentatively picked for um Tuesday, September sixteenth. If I'm right, is that that was good for Barb and Michelle and myself? Brad, does that work for either of you two? Okay, well.
Yeah, it's the possibility.
Okay, October. Um I'd like to pick a date, um in part cuz again, I wanna reach out to to Guillermo for that one. I wanna give him, you know, plenty of opportunity to make it. The week of October thirteenth is sort of is best for me. Uh the fourteenth, I think, would be the the Tuesday. I could also do Tuesday, the twenty first. October fifteenth is a town board meeting, so that we wouldn't do that. That's a Wednesday. But either of those two weeks, but I can't do anything later than Tuesday, October twenty first, cuz at the end of the week I'm leaving.
So you're saying either the twenty first or the fourteenth?
Those would be good, yes.
I won't be here that week of the thirteen.
Okay. But you would be the twenty first? Okay, how does either those dates look for anybody else? If you have numbers that go that far.
That looks possible.
Twenty first? Okay, bye.
It starts on uh Mon- Monday is the twenty, you mean, so. Yes, okay.
All right, we will go with that and and hope my wife doesn't shoot me. I think we're, I think, we're not leaving until.
Wait, so what's the date?
Tuesday, October twenty first. Uh Madagascar. It's a big trip, so yeah, that's why I need some time ahead of time to make sure we have everything ready. Yeah, yeah.
How long will you be gone?
Uh it's probably about two and a half week trip, something like that, two weeks, yeah. Somewhere near, yeah, oh yeah, I think it must be, yeah, two and a half, so we'll be back like the middle of the summer.
Be an assistant?
Yeah, yeah, no, no, we're, I mean, it's a tour, obviously, but this is how we've done some trips with, and he does great photography tours, so. But it's been on our list and we wanna go there where everything dies out. All right, so that will be the plans.
Did you want my chicken scratch?
Yeah, okay, yes, I would do all your chicken scratches. Okay, I'm gonna end this recording, I hope. There it is. All right, so thank you all and see you um on the sixteenth of September.